Put me in charge.
Uh oh.
There we go.
Okay, all right, now it's official. Open the public hearing now for BHT OCAM for the use of the site at 358 Coldbrook Road for Copart or a similar company. And here to discuss the project is Matt Gagnor?
Yes.
Yeah, so go for it.
Sure, so what they want to do is they want to have the land available for the storage of cars. They their service is an online auction, so they don't have people coming and bidding and all of these things. The majority of their work would be all of the sales are actually online. And the vehicles themselves, and I think it may be a little different than the Copart in the aspect that they're not dismantled, there's no fluids being drained. As a vehicle comes in, if it was into a car accident and it gets smashed or whatever, the condition that it comes in is the same condition as it goes out and it's through the online service of how they do it.
Is this a copat entity you're talking about or another company?
It's a different company. I don't know if they work with copat. They may or they may not because I know they have different avenues for it, but my understanding is, and I'm not 100%, like I represent the BHT, but I don't know exactly everything they do with it, but my understanding is they work with the insurance companies. And part of the deal with the insurance companies is they need to maintain open space for a disaster, like a major flood where there's three or 400 cars that get affected or a forest fire or something hailstorm, something where they need, they have cars and they need a place to go with them. So I believe what BHT primarily does is they provide this space and I believe the land is open most of the time, but it is available in case they do have situations like a major incident. In the meantime, they do, you know, the car accidents as they come.
But they they would do the online sales in OCAM? What cause they did, are they going to put up a building type thing or?
I believe there's a building on site now.
There is, yeah.
Yeah.
Are they just going to be hauled in for say like Katrina?
I don't believe, everything that's coming here is local and the reason why I say that is because they have, like I represent what they do in the Northeast. They have facilities in Uxbridge, there's one in Southbridge. I know this one is one that they're trying to make use of, so I don't believe it's out of state, I believe it's on the local level.
I'm just wondering how much in and out truck traffic they'll be dragging these cars back and forth.
Yeah, I I I don't want to speak to that because I can't say firsthand, but it's going to be minimal. And I don't want to define minimal because I don't want to misrepresent it, but I don't think they're anticipating a lot.
Would they be employed, any local people?
I believe they would have to have at least two people, yeah.
Two people.
This is like a facility, is the one in Templeton and one in Warren?
Yeah, I do believe that one in Templeton they have up and running, yeah.
That's under the copat name, right?
I I'm only familiar with the BHT, I think copat is separate from that. I don't know if they have mergers where copat works with them hand in hand. The only thing I really know and and how I got involved is my neighbor is Stevens Auto Wrecking in Charlton. So they were doing a Google search and they realized, hey, there's a construction company next door, let's talk to this guy, maybe he wants to build this facility. So that's how I got involved with them. Now Stevens junk got never kicked off and that was because of the landowners. They decided that it just wasn't for them. But in the meantime, that this group is primarily from Florida, so I seem to be the Northeast contact, so they have the one in Uxbridge that I I haven't had to do anything, but I'm available, I've had to go to the town, I've registered, I've done the quarry check and all that. If there is an incident, my phone rings, I can be there immediately. And the same one in Southbridge, it was at the time it was Kerboy's Auto in Southbridge. BHT has now acquired that.
So he would know what name would be this would be operating under, right? You know, no?
I only know it as BHT. I could send a text and see if I can get that.
I just know, just curious, I mean.
Who owns title to the land?
I believe, and I don't know exactly, but I believe they purchased the land.
ZOVL Properties.
ZOVL Properties.
So how's that relate to copat? Is that a parent company or?
ZOVL owns BHT and I think the original idea about copart was in the 2022 presentation, the plan was to either lease it to copart or a similar company. I can't remember the name of it, but.
Yeah, there's another one, yeah.
Another insurance company. But the concept was still the same then. They bring in wrecks intact and they auction online and so you don't go in there to buy a wheel or something, you just, if you're if you're a licensed dealer, you can bid on it and if you win the bid, then you bring your truck in and take it away.
Correct.
Well, what about people going down there to inspect the cars that they're buying? Is that going to happen or is that just going to be all online?
From everything that I've seen, it's all online. They they videotape now, so all of your auctions, even the heavy equipment ones, they're all videotaped, so they go around with the pictures and then they have a videotape of it. So I don't believe it's open to the general public or people to go in there other than the exporting of the vehicle when the tow truck comes to.
As I recall with last year, well, two years ago, we did a state, I think if you bid on it and you were going to buy it, I think they allowed the
Yes.
person to come and view the vehicle.
Bring up, yeah.
But you just came out of the blue, stopped down and see what you got to sell.
Yes.
You have to be a guy that bid on it and intends to buy it.
Yeah.
I think that's.
That may be the case.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I just know everything that we've talked about has been they videotape everything.
Do you know what the level of activity would be compared to what was proposed two years ago?
No, but I can ask the question.
Curious, because.
Let me send them a text and ask him if he can.
There's quite a few of these facilities in the
Yeah.
too far area too, you know, I've been wondering how that business is supported, you know?
Yeah.
Or are you saying this would be mostly empty and they're waiting for an event that might need it?
That that's what.
To be empty, empty property?
I I think there's a relationship with the insurance company that says they need to have X amount of acreage available in case of a major event.
So are these people getting paid by the insurance companies?
My understanding is they may be, yes.
Maybe, maybe is.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's part of the relationship, but I really don't know the the details on that.
So so it may not be an active area in reality?
Sounds that way, yeah.
Active in which way?
Longing cars going in and out.
Yeah, lots of traffic.
They're using it for a catastrophic event or what you had mentioned, if they had a big flood or a fire where you got a few.
But at the same time, they're going to have online auctions down there, so they're not going to.
If they have the cars there to do it.
Well, that's that's going to be their business model, they're not going to be waiting around for, waiting around for a hurricane, bring cars down.
Well, I don't, that's not what he's saying, he's saying they want acreage.
Right, I understand, I understand that, but at the same time, what's the minimum amount of cars that are going to be there, maximum amount? I mean, if there's a catastrophic, catastrophic event, are we talking 10,000 cars, are we talking?
Well, no, I mean, in reality, you might talk.
There's 30 acres, there's 30 acres of property down there. Gordy had, Gordy had thousands of cars down there.
Thousands? Was it thousands?
He had thousands of car, I live right behind, I live right behind it.
3,000 plus.
Was it?
When he cleared out the site, yeah, it was 3,000 plus.
I know we had 1940 vehicles down there.
Yes. Yeah.
I have another question. Was DCI in a butter to this?
Yes.
And they didn't, they don't, they didn't show up?
Well, it's very interesting that they that they are in a butter and when two houses got built in there in the late 80s, early 90s.
Restrictions on them.
They restrictions on them, yeah.
So, you know, my question is, if those, if my neighbors have restrictions on their building lots, what are the, you know, what are the restrictions on this piece of property? Seems like a lot of unknowns to me as far as, you know, traffic coming in.
Steve Colton, who, how are you?
Scott Corey.
Oh, Scott Corey, yes. I know where the house is.
Where do you live, Scott?
Right on Coldbrook Road, right next to Dawn.
Right next to.
Oh, that's, when I talked to Dawn, he said there were only going to be 15 car, you know, the minimum of 15 trucks coming in and out of there every day. I don't tell me no weekends.
I don't think anybody knows, but we had set a truck route up.
Yeah.
So they have to come in town a certain way and leave a certain way, so it wouldn't be going through.
Yeah, it won't be going by my house, but they'll be going by all my neighbors' houses.
Right, that's.
I just, I don't understand why DCI wouldn't be here.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we we take all this property from people to make a watershed by eminent domain.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
By eminent domain and then we have, you know, has anybody walked through that site down there? Have you been through that?
No, I've only seen it on paper.
Well, they cleaned it all up.
Whoa, cleaned it, have you been down there?
We walked it when it was going to be a solar site.
There's junk all over.
No, I think they picked up all the junk because we had, there was junk that was over the boundary.
There's junk, there's junk all over there, man.
Have you been there recently?
Yeah.
Fenders and bits of cars.
All kinds of metal.
Because I heard they picked that all up off the DCI land, that's what we were told.
Off the DCI land, maybe, well, I don't know about that either, I don't know, I can't, I can't, I don't know where those boundaries.
Heard about that and we mentioned that, it had to be cleaned up, so they went in and.
I just find it amazing that that place can be surrounded by DCI wetland. My neighbors have building restrictions on their residential lots and we're all about bringing more, bringing more.
The site has passed three 21Es.
Yeah.
So it's.
Well, I understand, I understand it, you know. I understand, there's probably nothing I can do about it legally, but I'd like to know exactly how, you know, what's the maximum amount of cars they're going to put down there. I mean, if we're talking waiting for a forest fire or a hurricane, now what is 50 cars down there and then a week later, there's 10,000 cars down there, 3,000 cars down there, that's completely different than.
I think they told us when the other people were applying that after they have a certain amount of time, they got moved out. They don't keep them there for months and months at a time.
Right, yeah, I think there's a turnover of no more than a year typically.
Is that what it was, yeah.
Yeah, so, can we say lenders?
So, yeah, I have them on the phone and also the answer to the question about the amount of traffic as compared to the last proposal on the middle of it, that's the same, nothing has changed, they're not anticipating extra. But I do have BHT on the phone here, I have them on speaker.
Good, okay.
And can you, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can, you guys, perfectly.
Okay, so we have you, thanks for answering. There's a, there's a landowner that has a couple of questions, I don't have the exact answers for them and I just thought it would be appropriate to give a call to you and you could probably shed a little more light exactly on it. One of the questions is what's the anticipated volume of vehicles?
Who are we talking to from BHT?
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Yeah, what is the, what is, just for the record, could you state your name for us so we can?
Sure, my name is Yaniv, Y-A-N-I-V.
Oh.
My last name is Cohen, C-O-H-A-N.
Hello Yaniv, we've been corresponding by email. Philip Warbass.
Yes, we have, hi, good day.
So the the neighbor was asking, like, how many vehicles are, they're concerned about the amount of vehicles there or the potential truck traffic?
So, because that site is not going to be used on a daily basis, we're not expecting a top, maybe a truck once a day, not even. I don't know if you know, but we have the same permit for the past almost two years now.
Yes.
And I don't believe that we had much deliveries at all. It's more of a, you know, like a catastrophe emergency type of online auction, so it's not going to be active all the time.
One of the questions.
We don't expect, yeah, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, one of the questions was, how many employees do you expect to have there? I said two, but I didn't know, I figured you had to have somebody there.
Yeah, so, so, so you got about the same right, because most of the work is going to be done online if at all, so we're talking about probably like three to four employees at max, it's, it's not going to be like a crazy operation at the moment.
Would you be using the existing building or would you be planning on putting up some sort of structure?
At the moment, we're going to use the existing building, we're not going to put any structure, we're going to do any construction at the moment.
Hours of operation would be what?
Our operations?
Hours of operation, yeah, would.
Yeah, nine to five, Monday to Friday, obviously we're not going to be working on a Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, good, good.
And you're putting up fencing and fencing and security and lighting, that type of thing?
Um, once operation, yes, that's going to be part of it, that's the most we're going to do, probably just make sure the site is secure, I believe there's a, there's some kind of fence over there, but yeah, that's.
Only in the front, you can walk right around it.
Yeah, just the front part has.
A gate.
A gate, I don't think it's in great shape either, you know? And what's the timing on this project? When would you expect to get this going?
So we not under pressure of time, so like you guys know, we already had the permit and we had operation and we didn't do much. I expect probably a couple of months until we're going to start maybe having some kind of movement over there.
Okay.
Probably going to wait until the springtime and maybe towards the summer.
There was some concern a year or so ago about subleasing part of the site to a company that was proposing to put in battery energy storage system is, can you tell us about that?
So it's just something that they were checking, but at the moment, obviously we put in that permit, so I don't, I don't, I don't think anything with that's going to move forward.
Okay.
Can I ask just as out of curiosity, what kind of concern the world happened about that company?
What kind of what?
What kind of concerns they have about that, that type of?
The battery?
Commercial battery energy storage systems are prohibited in the town.
Okay, so obviously if it's prohibited, there's nothing to talk about, it's not going to happen.
Okay.
We only do what allowed and, you know, we're looking just to work with everybody and contribute to the small community, especially, you know, we, we, we've been doing this type of projects in many different places, we know how to, you know, play along nicely with everybody.
Good. Any questions?
I have a question about
Sure.
whether it's going to be pavement, whether that's going to be asphalt down there?
So, so not necessarily, most of the time we don't do asphalt. If we will do something like that, because what I was saying is in the beginning that it's, I don't even know how much is going to be used on a daily basis, I mean, we're going to have employees over there, but it's not going to be like heavy traffic and it's not going to be like hundreds of cars, not at all. So a lot of time what we use, we use something that is a little bit more ecological, like it's like.
We call it grinding, yeah, grinding, milling.
Yeah. Like, exactly, like grinding, a little bit of milling and that's about it, we don't, we don't do any other stuff like that.
Would you be putting a sign on the outside, the entrance coming in?
I'm sorry?
Would you be putting a sign?
I'm sorry, I had.
Would you be adding a business sign at the front entrance by the road?
Oh, if it's going to be signage, once you're going to have operation, yes, there's going to be signage on the, on the road, obviously with permits and everything, but yes, it's part of the plan, if it's allowed, again.
Yeah, there's an existing sign, there's an existing sign there now for the, the former auto recycling and you could probably just replace that.
Yeah, exactly.
So on the average, how many cars might you expect to have there, given the current scenario?
To be honest, something between five to 10, maybe 15 at most, it's, like I said, it's a very small operation that most likely not going to be much bigger than that.
So this is like an overflow you had for existing businesses?
Something like it, yeah, so, so, you know, it's, it's, the companies that we do those type of projects, they're big companies, nationwide companies, and they need sites all over just in case, and, you know, most of the time, it's going to be just, you know, single number of cars. Give a good example, we have a project not to fall from there, they probably have like five or six cars on site most of the time.
Where is that?
I'm sorry?
Where is that location?
In Oxbridge, Oxbridge.
Okay, yeah.
It's about, I'll say like an hour for you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, based in Florida, I haven't, to be honest, I haven't been there. I mean, I've been in Massachusetts in the past and I, I used to live in Boston for a couple of months, like 15 years ago, but I haven't been in Oxbridge or in OCAM, unfortunately.
So would you have full-time employees every day or just would you have them when you have activity?
No, so there's going to be a few employees, you know, just maintaining the, the site, the property, making sure that everything is okay. I said it's going to be a small operation, but we're going to have people over there.
Okay, yeah.
Would you be hiring people from locally here or do you have people in mind to fill the jobs?
Usually, usually we hire locally, the companies that we work with, they are locally, we prefer people that, you know, know the terrain, know the area, local people is always better.
Are you, are you open to having the, the routes limited to signage so that we don't, they don't bring vehicles back and forth through the center of town, they could come by old Turnpike Road?
Oh, yeah, for sure, I mean, we, I understand the concerns, like I said, it's not the first, like, you don't want a lot of traffic, you don't want a lot of all those towing companies or, you know, having like traffic, we completely understand that, like I said, I think it's going to be minimal, but yes, we're definitely open to using like alternative routes, they're not going to, you know, places that are going to affect traffic and going to interrupt people in the day of day life, but I, I don't see it happening anyway, but we open to anything, any alternative roads or anything like that.
Okay.
Have they been in operation? Already?
Yes, not, not here, but in other locations like Oxbridge.
I understood that.
So, yeah, but we had a special permit for a while, we didn't do like, we, it's, it's a, it's a process, we haven't really had the site active, but we had the permit, but you just didn't, we didn't do the operation.
Well, it didn't get completed.
Aren't we here to talk about getting a new special permit because that
Expired.
expired?
Yes, yeah, so the, the end result of this will be to vote for a special permit and then.
The application we have is not properly filled out.
No, I think they just didn't do what they were supposed to do and file it properly. I think that was, wasn't that it?
They did everything they were supposed to do except record of the registry of deeds and you have, you have a month to do that and then you have a year to do something, some activity on the site. So the problem we had was we got to about a year and a half and had not been recorded and nothing was being done on the site and then we were hearing rumors that there was going to be a solar company looking to put some equipment in there. We don't have any restriction on, on solar panels, commercial solar panel installation, there's a process for that, but battery energy storage system, large scale, is what's prohibited in town.
But you also should be aware of how to do it this time.
Yeah.
So you don't fall into the same trap.
Phil, do you have a clock, excuse me, do you have a copy of the permit?
Yep. You want the previous permit?
Yes.
Because that's their, that's their application. That's the previous permit.
This is the previous and this is the one that.
The one in your left hand is the application and the one, the one on the right, that's the previous permit. So we put a lot of text in there that summarizes what we've talked about tonight, about limitations and traffic routing and employee and number of cars and so on.
You have any more questions for him? If not, I can get him off and if something comes up, I can call him right back.
Oh, sure.
I think, I think we're all set.
Thank you Yaniv, thank you.
So I believe he answered all of our questions, thank you. If something else comes up, I may call you back, but I think we're all set to get off the phone.
Okay, I really appreciate the help, thank you guys, appreciate that.
Okay, take care.
He's in Florida?
Yes.
What do they want to do up here for?
They're all, they're all over the country.
It's a national, it's a national chain.
It's probably none of my business, but I don't really understand this business model, how he makes money, you know, there's five or six cars down there and I don't see how that becomes a money-making operation for anybody unless insurance companies.
Insurance companies paying them to do it, I'm sure.
That's what I, yeah, my understanding of it is the insurance company pays to have that available space.
They have to be making money, would be doing it, right?
Right, so we still don't know what the maximum amount of vehicles would be.
I just said it wouldn't be like 15.
Those are, those are cars that are going to go online.
Right, and that's.
What's this? What does that mean, are?
That means revised, because there was a question about the scope of work described in there.
I think what he said was they had a, if you had a hurricane or a flood, we had a couple hundred cars, they had to put somewhere, those companies would put them up here.
Yeah.
Right, I understand that, but is it a couple hundred or is it a couple thousand?
Well, who knows?
Depends on the disaster.
I mean, you know, we don't have many, we don't have many disasters like that in New England anyway.
I think our biggest fear may be the hail. If we get a hail, that could, that could, that could do a number.
What about that storm in Leamester that wiped everything out?
Yeah, it was pretty high, but you're right.
Flooded cars there, yeah.
So there are, I think, I do think there's a need for it, I see why the insurance companies require it myself.
And it would be several of these companies might say, hey, we need to move some of these cars out here, or insurance company, dealing with all of them would say, we've got to put them somewhere, we'll put them in OCAM and.
Right, like MAP, MAP pre-insurance, take for example.
Yeah.
Right, they have people from OCAM, Webster, so it's probably the, the region in this side would go here, people on the Webster side may go to the OCAM and.
Sure.
Okay.
And so if Oxbridge is, can't take the number, then.
Yeah, and I don't even, I'm not even, I personally can't see it being maxed out either, I see it more being regional, so it's, you know, like a Spencer vehicle that gets damaged would come here, not to OCAM or.
Yeah.
Because it's closer.
Sure, yeah.
But.
So when, when a car is totaled, does that mean the insurance company buys it from the owner?
Yes.
And now they're, they're the owner and that's why they need a place to put it?
Yes.
Definitely want to sell it.
And, and there's the intern, because I think when there's something like that, I think the adjusters have to look at it.
They're probably going to use that as a site to do the adjustment, I would assume.
I would assume, would have to be.
Right.
We remember the ice storm.
Oh, yes.
Right.
Damage.
Yeah.
We had a tornado in our area in Charlton that way.
Right, that one, yeah, that did a lot damage.
So a situ- situation like that, there's several hundred cars that get overnight destroyed, they need a place to put them and I, my understanding is these facilities that they have, you know, lined up in case there's a situation like that.
But they eventually get moved out again.
I think they get moved out sooner than later.
Doesn't end up like the old fashioned junkyards.
No, no, no. Well, the previous owner said after a year they were, if they didn't move, they would, they'd probably scrap them.
Their advertisement says they, anything, isn't, they're still there at a year if they get rid of it.
It's not like the junkyard, they were there since the 40s, you know?
Yes, well, the good old days. And I don't know how the whole program works, but I, I feel like it's all very time sensitive, because if the insurance companies are, have vehicles on anybody's land, it's so many days and then it's cost per day or per.
Right, yeah.
So I feel, I feel like the turnaround after an event would be, would be relatively quickly.
Because they're paying every day on having that car there. Cause they're paying every day on having that car there, so they wanna, you don't-
They're not known for giving them money.
Sell it to scrap, sell it to scrap, right?
No, they're not, so, but again, I wanted personally to get him on the phone to answer the questions, because I know a decent amount of how they are and how they operate, but the nitty, the nitty-gritty questions, I don't wanna just fabricate answers out of the blue, I don't know, you know, so I felt like, hey, let's, let's get him on the, the phone, just to answer your question specifically as well, so.
So, I guess, your question would be, is there an overall maximum, given a horrible situation, an overall maximum amount of cars that could be put on that property at any one given time?
I would, I would think it would be on the available space that they have used in the past, cause I'm assuming this was an, an auto-
Yes.
-place in the past.
There's a bunch of lanes and-
So you said about three thousand?
Yeah, when he cleared it off, he cleared off more than three thousand cars.
I know that, yeah.
So-
Was well-hidden.
My, my guess, my guess is that would be max.
So whatever the land will fit.
It would be for a short period of time, then, because everybody's paying on a car, right?
Yeah.
And, and there's no dismantling.
Right.
No fluids, no batteries coming out, I believe as they come in, that's how they go out.
Right.
Yeah.
They, they put up storage racks, do you think, on the outside, to rack them, or?
Um, I don't believe they did, I know in, um, they have a project in New Jersey, and they, they did have some roofs, they had some open walled garage spaces, open base.
Have to be cement for the structure to be on, I'm sure.
Yeah, and, um, and I know they did that, because then they were putting, they did some, uh, solar panels on the roof of those.
Out to supply the-
Yeah, um, so I know they had discussions on that, I don't know what's in, um, store for this particular project, I know the one, um, in depth for the one in Charlton, and there was no, uh, in Charlton, they didn't have a building, uh, at the old Stevens Auto Wrecking, they had a trailer where you could go in and buy your parts and do your transactions, but they didn't have a facility, they were going to, um, they were gonna put a fence all the way around that facility, they were going to put up a building, um, much better than the one that they had now, and, um, they were going to use millings on the ground, there was some, you know, just muddy spots and, you know, Mr. Stevens that owns Junkyard hasn't done much with it in the last fifteen years, twenty years, and it's just getting overgrown, so they were basically gonna clean it up and, um, but again, not, not trying to have a coal park in there where they got trailer trucks coming and going with cars, right?
Yeah.
It was about the available space, the available land.
Right, that's a lot less invasive to the town this way, I don't, doesn't sound like there'd be a whole lot of truck traffic compared to-
No, and it's the same way in Oxbridge right now, Oxbridge has been online and, um, that's a pretty decent facility over there, I think it was originally Oxbridge Auto Salvage, and I've been in that one, they do have a building there that they used to work out of, but, um-
But the whole site would be alarmed, right, so there would be?
The building or the outside?
Well, the fence or the building or the gate or?
Knowing BHT, I'm sure there'd be, um, cameras for the entry fees, especially where the entries are coming in, where the, um, the fence is, um, and I don't know if they're planning on putting a fence around it, I know if it was a requirement from the planning board, that I'm sure they would.
I just know in the past when it was a junkyard, people used to routinely park down the road and sneak in at the fence and go cut stuff off of cars and haul them out and, uh, done for years, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't know what they would do for security, um, I do know, based on what he said today, they're planning on being there daily, so if somebody gets away with it once and they, they catch on to it, it's not gonna go weeks unnoticed.
Right.
You know, but, um, I'm, I know, I know they're probably watching everything with their cameras and all that.
But a fence and security isn't their benefit, has nothing to do for the town.
No, no, I'm just thinking about the activity for the police.
Yes, yeah.
You know, how much time would they, how often would they respond, I have to check the area or whatever, you know?
Yeah, once somebody cuts a catalytic converter out of a Mercedes Benz, they'll be, uh, they'll be fencing it in pretty quick.
Yeah, right.
It's different than another seventy-two Subaru.
Oh, they got the, the quotable sawzall, they can have it off in about three seconds.
That's what happened, they had, there were two guys that were going in and out of there, and they had a little wagon, they were pulling the stuff out with, the guy had a, you know, mechanic suit on and-
Yeah.
My neighbor Ray Moulton had a ton of game cameras and the cops got a bunch of game cameras from him, got the guy on camera and they finally caught him, and the guy said, well, that's the first time I've ever been down there, and they had all, they had a whole bunch of pictures of him coming in and out of there.
Yeah.
He was dressed for work, he had the sawzall and the coveralls and the little wagon, but-
Yeah.
They, they got Charlton Oil, Ralph has twenty-two of these six-wheel oil trucks in Charlton, big, big company, one night they went under there and got all the-
Cut the converters.
Got them all out.
Is that right?
Oh, and, and insurance, each truck was its individual claim, they gave them the hottest time.
Is that right?
Yeah, and, uh, and the detective work though, they were able to pick up cell phones, um, that were in that area at that time, because they had it on cameras like two AM or whatever, and so they were able to scan that property from the cell tower, and they ended up with a Connecticut number, they had a lead, and I don't think, I don't think they ever got them, but I think, I think they got them, I don't think they ever prosecuted.
I think nowadays they wanna steal an oil truck with the oil in it.
Leave the converter right there.
Yeah, they, they got them all, all, all of them in one night.
Yeah.
That would hurt.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the fire department would wanna inspect it from time to time too, for-
Yep.
You would have some sort of fire.
Especially if you get electric cars down there.
Teslas, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds too bad.
Yeah. So, and anything else that we need to cover for the, the hearing itself? Lisa, are you okay? You got questions from?
I guess so. Speed reader?
Yeah, it's a short application and a, and a short, uh, previous special permit, um, the one with the sticker on it has all of the parts that need to be recorded from the previous one.
No, on the previous application, is there a number of trucks stated on there, how many there would be?
Uh, I don't remember without, um, without looking at that, but I-
I remember Don said something to me that there, there was a-
They were talking about putting up another building, in addition, they were talking about putting up a bigger, they have more inside storage for cars at that time, but it sounds like that's not the case now.
So the, the, the conditions that we put on that previous one two years ago, uh, we said, um, the permit is for, uh, for the site, and anything that you begin to do, if you want to do a new building, come back to the planning board and, uh, make sure that we're clear on it.
But on the previous application, it didn't, there was no specific number of trucks per day?
No, no.
I don't think so.
We weren't able to say that, we can't control traffic on the road anyway.
Yeah.
We, no board can do that, activity is activity, you know, all you can do is make the route a little bit more palpable to the people in town, but you can't control the amount of traffic.
Yeah. But the use, but the use that you're describing today, that Yaniv described on, on the phone, uh, it sounds like it won't be like Oxbridge or Templeton, it's, it's, um, it'll be like an overflow facility.
Sounds like a big parking lot.
Yep.
What did you just say a few minutes ago about storage of vehicles inside?
I just said that the previous owner was gonna put up a building, they have quite a bit of inside storage, cause they were gonna have probably weekly auctions or something to that effect, sounds like that's gonna be on a, I don't know, it'll be weekly here or not.
Is there any connection of the current owner and this previous application?
Uh, it's a competitor probably, right?
Well, it's still owned by Zoval Properties.
The land?
Yes, yeah, the land, the land that Gordy, Gordy sold it to, Zoval Properties LLC.
And they're the ones making this application?
Uh, yes, so they're applying as BHT OCAM LLC.
What's BHT stand for?
I knew you were gonna ask that.
Oh, good, I don't feel stupid.
I don't know what it is, I know it's the BHT group and that's the, uh, president, his name is Ram, which is an R, it's not, it's not a B.
Sure it stands for something?
Uh, yeah.
So, um, I move that we close the hearing?
Close the favor.
Sounds like everything that needs to be said has been said.
And so?
Okay, so we close the hearing and-
Pete, um, I mean, hang on one second, I'm not ready to-
Okay.
This previous application says the owner is Zoval Properties.
Yep.
The application for special permit lists the owner as BHT of OCAM.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is that one and the same, or?
They, they have the same address, they're at five, fifty-five fifty-five Angers Avenue in Florida, same suite number, same everything, so all that business is conducted out of one office.
So BHT is a subsidiary of ZOVL?
Yes, yeah, Z-O-V-L, yeah.
All these little corporations that- Yeah. As long as it's clearly spelled out in this application, which by the way, doesn't have a date on it, do we have any idea of when this came, or?
Uh, November twentieth, I think was the actual application, about with, with the town clerk.
So, the proposed amount of traffic says we are anticipating one to two deliveries per day, one pickup a day from FedEx or UPS, no customers, online auction.
Okay, so that's the, that's the information I'm interested in.
Yeah, so if the, I didn't find anything in here that spoke to fifteen trucks a day in the previous one or this one.
Did you see the number?
Well, because it can't really, we can't tell how many-
Honestly, I don't think we even need, I mean, what are we even talking about, the previous one, because it's lapsed and it's none.
Right.
Right.
It doesn't matter.
It's got a different name on it.
Yes, uh, yeah.
But not, well, we're not in a position to tell them they can only do fifteen trucks a day.
So they, they own it?
Mm-hmm.
Is Zoval Properties owns it as BHT of OCAM now, is that it?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and the applicant is a different person?
Uh, right.
Yes, because this says the applicant was BHT and the owner was Zoval.
Right.
And this one says the owner is BHT and the applicant is Yaniv Cohen.
Right, Yaniv Cohen owns, um, Zoval Properties and BHT and-
That, is that who we were just talking to?
I guess maybe we just-
Yeah, that's who I was talking to.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe I just looked at the new application, let's confuse it.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make sure that-
There we go, you don't care about the fence.
Yeah, we don't care about that, water under the bridge.
No, I'm, I'm okay with it, right on it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if you get as much activity as you've had already, we're fine.
They can employ a few people in town, that's a good thing too.
They didn't address the question of what provisions would be made to, made to screen the equipment from the road and the neighbors, there was no, it just says we will try to keep the use of equipment and delivery to a minimum, so no equipment or track.
Right.
Will stay on the road.
Um.
I don't know what track is on the road.
I, I think that's probably because the site is so far back in the woods that even the-
What I'm pointing out is it didn't, he didn't complete this and state.
True, yes, there's not a lot of text on it.
No, there isn't a lot, and that's one of the things that comes back and forth, you know?
That's why we, we will put the conditions on.
Okay.
So, um, we'll draft the conditions, then our, and our next people will do that and, uh, making adjustments.
I'm good to go then.
Great.
How much equipment can there be?
Nothing really, probably a four-truck.
Just unloading and loading stuff.
Something for moving the vehicles around on the site probably.
It says on the application, other equipment.
Uh-huh, yeah.
That could be, that could be excavators or-
Well, I mean, they're gonna have to move their vehicles.
Right, but I'm talking storage, it says on, what I got in the mail, it talks about cars and other equipment being stored.
Material handling equipment, I would think.
I don't, I don't think that would be on the application, if they were talking about having their own personal machinery down there.
Well, I mean, they're gonna have to move cars.
Right, I understand that, Gordy always had a backhoe on there, but are they gonna be able to store construction equipment there?
No, no.
It's gonna be strictly cars.
Right, uh, that, yeah, that's, that's what I get from the application.
Maybe they have a ramp trucks, I don't know, they may have a ramp trucks and a-
The letter that I got didn't just say cars, it said other equipment, right?
And, and I don't know, I'm speculating, so this is up in the air, but like, maybe if an RV got damaged, that was insured by MAPRE, they might, maybe that would fall into the other equipment.
Yeah.
Other than like a car or a truck, like an RV or something.
They can't disassemble, so they're not gonna have any torches or any noise-cutting stuff, it's gonna be, take it off the truck, take a picture of it, get it, picked up again, somebody, resell it to somebody.
When you look on Google Earth at the coal park facility in, uh, in Warren, uh, seems, looks like there are a whole bunch of RVs in there too, RVs and trailers, so presumably they would have some, have some of those here if they need the overflow.
My guess is if it's insured by-
Yep.
The MAPREs or the, the All Americas or whoever that does the insurance, and they have to get rid of it, because it's totaled or whatnot, that may fall into that other.
The fact that they're paying on those cars every day-
Yeah.
Means they're not gonna stay there too long, probably, you know?
Yeah.
Again, I don't know, I'm just-
Is this the original company that Gordy sold the property to?
Uh, yes, he sold it to Zoval Properties LLC.
The guy you were just, who was just on the phone?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it hasn't changed hands.
But it doesn't, you know, in our conditions, we need to make sure we address the equipment and that sort of stuff, so that-
Right.
Because it's not properly filled out and the-
Right.
The thing to say what vehicles are gonna be there, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it to a minimum, well, that's, that's nice, but as long as they know that if those sort of things changes, then that needs to come back before the board, same if they decide to build another building.
Yeah, yeah, so-
Are you gonna vote on this tonight?
Uh, we can, if you're comfortable with that, we can vote on the special permit, and then, uh, we'll put together the conditions and review those at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Yeah, make a motion that we accept the permit as written.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Of course, you just accepted as written, and I'm gonna pick it apart when we have, let's do the order of conditions.
We can add on whatever we need, but it's the condition part of it that we have the right to do, but I don't see a whole lot we gotta do.
So I know on the, um, for the next meeting, will you be drafting the order of conditions or will those be out there and that will be up for discussion, like, do I need to come to the next meeting is the question, should it, should it help if I'm here or?
Um, I don't think so, I think we'll, we'll put together, um, a draft of the permit conditions and review them as a board at the next meeting.
Okay.
And then, uh, I think we'll take that version and send it to, uh, probably, uh, Mr. Cohen, so that he'll know where we are with it.
Okay.
Um, once we vote on, uh, once we vote on that set of conditions, the special permit, then there's a twenty-one day period, appeal period.
Okay.
Uh, and as soon as the town clerk notifies the board that there's been no, no appeal, then, uh, we issue everything.
Okay.
And then this time, we'll just include a caution that you really wanna record it.
Yeah, you should, make sure he understands the timeline.
So-
If you're gonna be his representative though, maybe we should CC him a copy of what Mr. Cohen's getting.
Did you put your email on that?
I did.
Good, okay, yeah. I can, uh, let me throw my phone number on there.
Good, okay. Just in case there's a call or if there's ever a problem. If I could borrow a pen again. Yeah, I got one. Thank you.
And what's your position with BHT?
I'm, I'm their northeast local. I don't even know what they call me. The field guy. Um, I own excavators in Charlton and I'm the closest one they trust. So I, I'm just a contact person. I, I don't really have a.
Move vehicles with your excavator?
No.
I'm just curious why that came up. I, I have an excavator.
Repair them.
No, be, because my neighbor was Stevens Auto Wrecking and they were doing a Google and they looked at me and said, oh, there's a construction company next door. Let's get in touch with him to see if he wants to do the improvements for Stevens Junkyard. And that's how I.
Oh, that was nice.
That's how my whole relationship, yeah. And since then, um, we've, I've met, uh, I've, I've met them. We've come out. I've gone to the Oxbridge site with them. I've done work with them at the Warren site. I don't think they bought one, not the co-park. They tried to buy a piece over there. I went out with a machine and I did some exploratory test perks for them and just poking around, looking for ledge and whatnot. Um, but I've, I've been working with them over the past couple of years on different projects and I, we just have a relationship where I think they trust me and it's just a matter of they, they wanted somebody here to represent them.
Right, yeah.
Kind of threw me into the fire because I'm not that familiar with this project. The only thing I've really seen was, um, the, you know, the aerial views of it. I read the old permit and I.
Yeah.
You know, I did some studying on what they're doing here and of course I've been on the phone with them. You know, hey, what, what's the plan on this project? Don't send me in there because I don't know anything. Um, but it's, they're all similar, what they're doing, yeah.
Yeah.
It's trial by fire.
Trial by fire, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, but that's why I mentioned the excavator. That's, I'm just, I'm a tree company and a site guy out of Charlton and, you know.
You know Jim Baker?
I do.
Yeah. I work with him a lot.
Oh, you do?
Yep.
My brother and his son went to school together. Luke.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good kids.
Yeah, Jim, Jim's a pretty good guy. He knows me well.
That takes care of that. Then for the board. Zoning district map nineteen seventy-two.
Well, set on your part if you don't want to.
I'm going to hit the road.
Thank you for coming, Matthew.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. Thank you, yeah.
Thanks for looking out for us.
Hi Scott.
Take care.
See you.
So the nineteen seventy-two map, uh, is included in, uh, my laws, just from the attachment pages. This is just, several copies of the same thing, but this is the map that Central Mass Regional Planning used for us.
We all get a copy?
Oh, I'm going to put it up in the, you can take copies.
Huh?
You can put a copy.
Are these all the same?
These are all the same. I was just, just going to post them up in, uh.
I was going to pass one to Lisa.
I got one up on my house, the old original.
Oh, yeah, yeah. What used to be the, um.
I want one of these.
What used to be our planning board room?
Is this a DCR map of?
Uh, no, it's done from scratch. I mean, they did it based on our old map.
Is this pretty accurate for roads?
Yes, yep.
Who did the map? DCR?
No, this is all done by, um, I can't, can't remember what it's named now.
I don't know.
But all done by.
Oh, no, CMPR.
CMRBC, yes.
CMPR, all right.
Yep. And so they have.
Whoa, a lot of state land.
Some back and forth by email. I told them include this little cutout here that shows the town center.
Yeah.
Too small in here.
That's nice.
And, uh, general information, uh, and it's, it's, all it shows is the zoning district and it says we are.
One.
One district.
All right.
Residential agricultural.
District one.
Mm-hmm.
That's true. Yeah, it looks good. It's a nice, nice job.
Yeah, excellent.
So how can I get a copy of this?
Uh, well.
Ask Janet or probably.
Well, we only need to post the one, so, hey, take them? Put them up in the kitchen?
I'd love to.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is neat.
Yeah.
I'm always trying to figure out where anything is in relation to something else.
Nineteen seventy-two.
Seventy-two, I thought.
Yeah. And it says Roger Longigan.
Right.
Oh, wow.
Roger Longigan, R.
I remember that name.
Maybe I should keep that one up.
Yes.
It's in the antique.
Yes, yep, yep.
That's a nice job.
Yeah, the original is, um, when you walk in that space out there, if you're going to close the door to that room.
Yeah.
It's behind the door.
Yeah, we should pin it up on the long somewhere.
Yes.
Actually, put in a frame would be nice almost, yeah.
A good idea, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, so it doesn't just wrinkle, yeah. Uh, that's a good idea. I'll take this to Staples and, um, get framed. We'll put it in our, the, the planning board room that way.
Yeah, that's a good thing to have people look at anyway. All right.
Well, I'll also have some additional copies too, so at least.
Yeah, all right. When you get, get the copies sometime. Okay. What else we got going on?
Uh, I believe that's it. We haven't heard anything new about the Longview Roads.
Right.
The last word we had from town council was what, three months now?
They'll still be working on that.
They told us that Sonny's attorney, uh, knows what they're supposed to do. Town council laid it all out and, um, all I remember is they, there were three easements that they needed to get and they had acquired one of the easements in ten months, so.
Right. And then there was an issue with the drainage pond down there, I think.
Yeah.
Right away.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's.
But these issues have been ongoing for how many years? Since he built that subdivision?
Two thousand and one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually nineteen nineties.